Good evening. The Sacramento City Council meeting will come to order. Would the clerk please call the rule?
Yes, we'll start with Member Ashby. Warren, Harris, Hanson, Chenere, Gara, Jennings, Carr, and Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
We do have a quorum. This meeting is broadcast live this evening, and there is a replay on Saturday at 7:00 PM on Metro Cable Channel 14. If you have a cellphone, please silence it. Speaker's slips are located in the back of the room on the ledge. If you wish to speak, please complete one and turn it in to the Assistant Clerk here at the front. We also have cordless microphones and assisted listening devices should anyone need one. I would also like to encourage any of you who wish to participate online in giving comments on our agenda items. We have e-comment that is live and is steadily increasing in usage, and it's a good way to communicate with your electeds. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, I would like to ask Sarah Brown, Shelton High School, Class of 2017, to please come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. And you can bring your classmates up, too, here. I don't have them all by name, but they're all welcome. All here for government in action.
Ready? One, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for doing that and for coming to the City Council meeting. A happy Valentine's Day to everybody. That wasn't on the agenda, I know, Mr. City Attorney. But, you know. Let us begin with the consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member wishes to discuss? If... Yes. File item 13, let the record reflect, Councilmember Ashby recused herself on file item 13. Okay. We do have public testimony on the consent calendar?
We do not have any, and I have no corrections or additions to read as a record.
Moved and seconded in record time. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? The consent calendar passes on a vote of nine to nothing. Very good. Let us move to file item 23, which is being continued to next Tuesday, the 21st of February. That'll take us then to...
We need a motion to do that.
We do need a motion to continue. Moved and seconded, third, fourth. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Measure passes nine to nothing. We now go to item 24, please.
Okay. Item number 24 is an ordinance amending various sections of the city code relating to secondary dwelling units.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and Councilmembers. My name is Remy Mendoza with the Community Development Department. In September, the Governor signed Senate Bill 1069 and Assembly Bill 2299 to promote the construction of secondary dwelling units as a means of affordable housing in California. The state mandated changes fall into the areas of parking, size of unit, setbacks, and utilities. This item before you is an ordinance to amend the city's existing secondary dwelling unit regulations in order to comply with the new state law and the city's housing goals. So what is a secondary dwelling unit? They are commonly referred to as granny flats, in-law units, or accessory apartments because they are often used by family members. In each case, the second unit represents a second dwelling with its own kitchen, bathroom, and living area. It must be located on the same property as a single-family unit, and it may be rented separately from the primary residence. Some of the benefits of secondary dwelling units include affordability by design, they provide additional income to homeowners, and they maximize limited land resources and existing infrastructure. For approval purposes, the new state law creates two subcategories of secondary dwelling units. The first category includes additions to existing structures or new detached second units. Cities can designate areas where they are permitted and other criteria consistent with state law, such as unit size, setbacks, and design review. The second category is those contained entirely within existing structures. For these types, there is very little local discretion, and they must be approved if there is independent exterior access as well as sufficient setbacks for fire safety. For the first category of second units, one of the most significant changes has to do with parking. Under the new state law, parking cannot be required for second units that are located within a half-mile of public transit or located within a historic district. As shown on this map, under this criteria, approximately 90% of the city is already exempt from parking requirements. Therefore, a key proposed change as part of this ordinance is to have no minimum parking requirements for secondary dwelling units. Aside from parking, other proposed changes include an increase in the maximum size of second units up to 1,200 square feet, easing setback requirements for garage conversions, new design standards to protect the privacy of neighbors, and also for all second units, removing the requirement for separate garbage and recycling containers. In terms of the approval process, second units are allowed in every residential, commercial, and mixed-use zone. Those that meet the development standards are exempt from site plan and design review and approved with a simple ministerial application. Second units within a historic district or accessory to a landmark will still require a site plan and design review at the director level. Other relevant changes underway beyond the proposed ordinance include the following: For utilities, second units shall not be considered a secondary dwelling, a new dwelling, for the purposes of calculating monthly water, sewer, and drainage fees. A second unit instead will be considered additional rooms to the primary unit, which will result in lower monthly utility bills with an approximate loss of city revenue of $20,000 per year. With respect to fire sprinklers, second units shall not be required to provide fire sprinklers if they are not required for the primary unit. Amendments to the California Residential Building Code are coming soon, currently underway. This change will be implemented by our fire department and our building department. With that, I'll conclude my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know we have one public comment here. Mac Worthy. Mr. Worthy, how do you feel about this item?
Not opposing the item, but when you're more restriction on construction on dwellings, when you're getting more restriction on dwellings, that costs poor folks more money. We need to do something to have people for supplement incomes because developers have owned this town. No quality in residential. Your quality in residential is card paper. And no quality of the structure in residential. When you're looking at your heating situation, if you've got an eight-foot ceiling, your utilities are going to be more than a 10-foot ceiling because every time you walk through your five foot, you're going to move it. Every time you open the door, it's going to move it. But if you've got three to four foot up there that the heat stay there and well insulated, you save money on utilities. Tell the people the truth. All this stuff by the computer, how many people live in that house, and how many times that door open per day? Every time that door open, that computer kick in. Regardless of what computer. I was into electronics, people. I know what's dealing with electronics have. When you've got that door open, if you've got five people going in and out of there, your utilities are going to be more than what you've got two people going in and out. That's what you've got to think about when you're billing. You've got card paper bill here, people. Quality, we look at the quality of billing is sad. We've got fire sprinklers. People, we have connections to Atlanta charges. That's going on at all time. But you're not doing anything for people here when you put that extra in, so what it going to cost you? It's just like if you schedule for four outlets and you place another one, it's going to cost you fifty or sixty more dollars. Tell them the truth. Only one contractor needed to put your electric in, and that's the switch box. Everything else is common sense. Your hot water heater, somebody's telling me, "Well, you've got to have a contractor that likes to put a hot water heater in." What stupidity have come to us of common sense? It's sad, people. Wake up and try to give the people some quality here and supplement incomes because they don't have trust for them.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanson, thank you. I know you had a big part of bringing this forward here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I just want to start off by thanking our staff. The state passed this bill last year, was signed in October, and we've been working so much on housing, creating housing at all different levels of accessibility, not only affordable and permanent supportive, but I think it was Greg and Remy and Jim that came to us a couple of years ago with Affordable by Design as a concept for the city. And embracing second units is a big part of creating more housing. I think the state is about two and a half million units behind where we should be statewide, and our region has got its fair share of that. So this is one solution, certainly not a big one, but our goal was to get it done right after the first of the year, and I know our staff worked really hard to get it to us quickly, and so I thank you for getting it to us tonight. And some of the changes made from community development to now, from the Lawn and Ledge meeting till now, I think are really good. I'm going to move the item, but I also just, from a public standpoint, as we move to take advantage of properties like this, know that the city is also working on housing generally. And we've streamlined housing approvals so that much of it's by right. We've tried to lower the barriers and therefore the cost to building housing because we know we're getting a lot of people who feel squeezed by rents, displaced by new development in their neighborhoods, and these are small pieces of our larger picture of trying to address those concerns. So, Mr. Mayor, your colleagues, Senator Wykowski and Assemblymember Bloom, helped champion this.
Yeah.
But it actually started, this particular ordinance was inspired by Mayor Tom Butt, another mayor of Richmond, and the legislature took this up and tried to move it forward as a state policy.
It's very good law. Following up, if I may, before I turn to Councilmember Getta, it would be interesting to know, we're going to have lengthy workshop session on the issue of workforce and affordable housing here at the council in the coming weeks, and action steps. And as you know, the council, the Budget and Fiscal Committee set aside $5 million one-time funding for housing-related issues. I would like to know, have some analysis about what this law, now this change in ordinance, might mean in terms of additional quantity of affordable housing units. What do we expect? And I know it may be a range, and it may just be an estimate, but I think it's important that we look at what we're doing, what the state is helping us to do, and begin quantifying how we begin filling the gap here. So if we could get that, you know? And I think the public would be interested that this law actually will have some practical impact in terms of alleviating our affordable housing or workforce housing shortage.
And maybe, Mayor, just, one of the things I'd suggest is, the Governor proposed something we already did, which was buy-right housing. Sacramento has been leading in reducing barriers to creation of housing. We approved an affordable housing project called Lavender Courtyard at the staff level in six weeks. The financing hasn't yet caught up with our ability to approve, but I think as a model, Sacramento is leading, and I think this is a really good thing.
Good, good, good. Thank you. Councilmember Getta.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I want to echo the concerns in how this is one step and one piece of the overall affordable housing issue, and just the housing affordability issue. I'm going to spin that on its head. It's what people can't afford. And as Councilmember Hanson and I participated in, and Councilmember Harris also participated in a conversation with the Local Government Commission, I mean, the issue that we have is, we see all our family members and folks wanting to come back to Sacramento, and so that is definitely putting a squeeze on the supply. Also, we see family members and retired folks who want to live with their family. And case in point with a constituent of mine who constructed a second dwelling but was confronted with all of the additional utility charges. I want to thank the utility department for working with that constituent to making sure that the unneeded additional garbage or meters or rates for the same amount of output that was happening already in that property was addressed. But again, to the bigger piece, is if we're going to really tackle the issue of the rental market being squeezed out, if we're going to tackle the ability for folks to actually raise their kids and buy a home here in Sacramento and stay in the area, to be able to keep our talent from students graduating from Sac State or folks going into the UCD Medical Center and graduating from there and McGeorge, then we have to be able to have a housing supply that they can afford to move into. And that starts at the rental market side along with the housing side. And so I want to second this motion and also want to thank our utility staff for working with our constituent on that issue to making sure that they can also keep their family together.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've been building in this town a long time, and there was talk several years ago, many years ago actually, about relaxing the requirements for granny flats. We took a couple of steps, but nothing this drastic, nothing this significant, I should say, in terms of truly making it affordable to do a secondary dwelling unit. I absolutely welcome this. There's a lot of benefits. We get a little more density in a very suburban model that the city was built around. It will lead to fewer vehicle miles traveled overall. It will take a little bit of pressure off of our housing and rental market. All of these are wonderful things. You know, there's another benefit to this that was sort of touched on by my colleagues, but as housing gets more and more expensive, I think we're going to see more and more that people leave their houses to their children. And this is a way, actually, to keep your aging parents close to you, and that, I know that that will be used, and in fact, that might be autobiographical at some point, as I bequeathed my house to my daughter, and yet I can stay close and stay in a granny flat that I will probably build, so...
Grandpa flat.
A grandpa flat. There you go. So it has a lot of benefits to the city, and making this a ministerial permit and not subject to site and plan review is very big. That's a great deterrent to a lot of people to pursue this path. I think the state really got this one right, and thank you, staff, for following along and also on the comments from Lawn and Ledge, which I think moved it again in the right direction. I know that just the simple thing of having to have two more trashcans on site because you had a secondary dwelling unit was also a big deterrent to people. It happened in my district. This is a great thing, and I'm happy to support it.
Excellent. There's no public testimony on this. We already did one, that's right, Mr. Worthy. I forgot. No more council comments. There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? The measure passes, again, nine to nothing. Let's move now to item 25 here.
This is an ordinance, is the Phase Two of the Planning and Development Code.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. My name is Greg Sanlin. I'm a senior planner with the Community Development Department. Tonight, I'm presenting the second phase of the Planning and Development Code for In 2013, the city adopted the Planning and Development Code to bring in line our zoning code with our new general plan's vision for sustainable urban infill development. These changes have substantially eliminated unnecessary planning entitlements and has made the planning process more streamlined and predictable. The second phase of the Planning and Development Code involves updating our subdivision and driveway standards, which are outdated and redesigned for suburban development. In terms of substantive changes, we are recommending a parkland dedication requirement that's consistent with current parkland levels. This is implementing our 2035 general plan policy of keeping our aspirational goals of five acres per thousand residents while requiring development to meet its fair share of the park acreage service goal. Additional recommended changes are that projects with 250 lots or less pay an in-lease fee. This is up from 50 lots. We want to use our remaining land more efficiently as well by allowing eligible parkland and detention basins to receive up to 80% parkland dedication and credit. Additionally, for flexibility in urban infill areas, we have expanded the list of qualifying private recreational amenities for an eligible credit of 25%. Driveway standards have been updated to reduce unnecessary driveway variances. Key changes include reducing the minimum distance between residential driveways. This will help for townhouse developments with narrow lots. Also, reducing the minimum residential driveway width from 14 to 12 feet, and reducing the minimum distance that a garage must be from an alley from six to four feet. However, driveways would be prohibited at a location that would create hardships for the installation of public utilities, and at a T-intersection where construction of a driveway will interfere with the establishment of crosswalks for public safety. In terms of overall changes, we have consolidated our process requirements and definitions relating to subdivisions and driveways into the Planning and Development Code, or Title 17, making the code easier to use and removing redundancies. Lastly, we are proposing to allow minor modifications to approved tentative maps to be heard at the zoning administrator instead of going back to the Planning and Design Commission. In sum, this second phase of the Planning and Development Code will further enable our city to develop in a healthy, sustainable manner. These code changes will create more predictability, minimize risk, and reduce the cost of development, thereby increasing Sacramento's economic potential and making our housing more affordable. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
First of all, thank you very much. We do have public testimony. Mr. Worthy. Mr. Worthy, you signed up? What's wrong with this?
I wish to have many people, especially like Oak Park, observing what's going on. Now, when you lease a property, you can grain skin, but I'm talking facts. When you lease a piece of property, commercial, you've got to have so many parking slots. Which you began to tell the people now, that we're going to narrow your driveway down. There should be some law somewhere that you can get a truck in your backyard because your easy way for utilities is blocked off. A fire start, how you going to get a truck in your backyard? Think about what you're doing. You need, a fire department needs to get in that backyard. But what you're saying, like in Oak Park, everybody from my house, a duplex to two houses, a duplex, we've got six cars.
Turn me off.
You even got parking slots no more. You go down the alley, going towards Sac High, everything's in the alley. Parks, front of it, it's all parking slots. But yet still, you want to put some more houses on it. What are you getting ready to do? Eliminate the people from their housing or squeeze it out? Yes, it's a good idea that the kids going to come in front of the house, but you don't have no quality yet. Woodframed houses, 52 years lifespan, but what you putting in it now, you don't even know what they're going to last 52 years in it. So what's your kids going to get? A doghouse. We see it come back in Oak Park. The white folks in Oak Park, now their kids are back, and most of the people that's back there now, not five years in Oak Park, they came from San Francisco. You've got to understand what's going on. They can't be up from San Francisco. Where is the jobs going to be here? You're creating housing, but you ain't creating no jobs. Somebody needs to talk business. Why would you come to Sacramento and ain't no job here because the house here? Are you on welfare? That's it. This is the mentality you've given people. Come here, you can get on welfare, but there ain't no jobs here.
This is about park acreage here, it's not about welfare, so your comments are barely germane. I'll let you finish your last four seconds.
But the thing about, see, if you would keep your mouth closed, you may learn more.
Oh, thank you, sir. Very good. Mr. Getta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Greg, I'd like to thank you and all the staff for updating and taking a look at our modern planning, particularly on the issue of something as basic as driveways. I mean, if you go down a place like in Tahoe Park on Broadway, you've got driveways that go in between streets or into cross streets, and now in the future, when we see that there are different walking patterns, we can't install sidewalks. And I think that's something that we've got to get ahead of early, and anytime there's a development, whether it's a partial development or an entire master-planned community, that we get ahead of the ability for us to be able to plan out walkable communities. And with that, I'll move the item.
Second. Moved and seconded, we have Councilmember Harris first or Hanson, I'm sorry?
You know, actually, Mayor, I'll speak on it.
Okay. Very good. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick question, Greg. I know in some areas, we're trying to avoid too many curb cuts on the street side because of what it does to the urban fabric. As you talked about driveways, we, in the grid, we've tried to make sure that we limit driveways in the front to the extent necessary, combine them, and have properties be alley-loaded if possible. And then on places, on commercial quarters like Broadway, there's way too many curb cuts for the number of, in a block, and it really creates a break in the urban fabric and causes a lot of other challenges for pedestrians and bikes. So how does this driveway standard support our other goals? Is there still some ability of the public work staff and the community development staff to coordinate those uses? Or particularly, we had somebody who wanted to put a driveway right near the corner of 16th and F to load and unload a building, and it just seemed unsafe, given the dynamics. Do we still have enough discretion to manage those issues?
Yes. Through site plan and design review, that's certainly one of the things we can weigh in on, is driveway location. Also, in our general plan, we have urban forum categories, encouraging parking coming in from the alley first, driveway's kind of the last resort. And another policy we're contemplating with the downtown-specific plan with more specific area focus could be continuing to limit driveways and curb cuts along, on sidewalks. So if there's an alley, then we're really going to push hard for access to come through there.
And then just one last thing. You mentioned townhomes, and I know we're looking at a lot of lot splits and small parcels where we're doing 20-foot wide lots or 40-foot wide, you know, or sorry, 20-foot wide lots, putting two homes on a 40-foot standard, a 40 by 160. Can we, through the code, ensure that a driveway is a shared use? Rather than each of those having a separate driveway, can we ensure, like we did with Broadway Redux, shared, making a shared facility so that those two garage doors are next to each other, they have one driveway to get in, and then they can go to the side that's appropriate for their property? Is that something contemplated here or addressed? Sorry, I didn't think of it until you were talking.
Not specifically in this code, but it's certainly a valid thing to consider when we're reviewing these projects to see if we can do shared driveway opportunities.
So I would second the motion to approve the update to the code, but I just think we're trying to do our best to reduce barriers, but we're also, we want quality in what we do, and those particular things are really important on the quality side, and I think they can be dealt with at the design and site plan level. But I don't want to lose sight of, we're not just going to put a driveway everywhere because sometimes the project applicants look at the part of the code that suits them, but not the whole code, and balance out the different challenges of it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. There's been a motion and a second. We've heard public testimony. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? The measure passes, again, on a vote of nine to nothing. Let's go now to file item 26. 26, go ahead.
This is a proposed development impact fee ordinance and resolutions that set fees and adopting finance plans and NEXUS studies and updating the fee deferral ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Mr. Chan, Brian Devois, Director of Community Development. Before I begin my presentation, I have a couple of quick things to read into the record. First, regarding updating the fee deferral ordinance, staff recommends deleting subsection E of section 1852-030 related to prevailing wages in the proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 1852 of the city code related to deferring payment of city fees on projects. If the ordinance is adopted by council, staff will include the prevailing wage provision in the city's fee deferral agreements. Staff also would like to replace an exhibit to the resolution establishing the citywide transportation development impact fee program. Second page, Attachment 7, page 74 of the staff report, which you should have available. This correction is to add the Sacramento Center for Innovation-specific plan area to the transportation development impact fee incentive zone. And then finally, an amendment to Article 3 of Chapter 1856 related to the citywide transportation development impact fee. We recommend amending 1856-340, Section C. The exemption, subsection 4, to read as follows. Development in the Delta Shores area is provided for in the cost-sharing agreement I-5 interchange and consume this River Boulevard extension, Agreement Number 6, or C, as in Charlie 2012-0059.
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I might, at this-
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I might, at this point, just interject a procedural comment here.
Please.
These are three proposed changes to the ordinance language that was passed previously at the PFP stage, the first reading. The new council rules of procedure require that ordinance changes at this stage, after the first reading, be continued to another meeting.
Ah-huh.
If council does not want to continue this, there is an option available, but you'd have to vote as a body to suspend the rule, the council rule applicable here, the one I just described, and that would take a two-thirds, a six vote majority of the council. That would be a procedural motion at this time, if the council desires to proceed.
Let's, let me ask a question or two about the procedure. Would there be any harm to delaying this for a week? You know, I'd prefer not to suspend the rules unless, unless we have to. If we have to, it's extraordinary, happy, happy to do it. But what, what's the deal?
I would just say that there are an extraordinary number of staff and a lot of stakeholders involved in the process.
Here, tonight. Okay. Fair enough. That's one. Number two, are these largely considered technical amendments?
Two of the amendments would be substantive, not, not just technical.
Controversial?
One of them might be.
Controversial?
I'd have to leave that to staff.
I would say they are not controversial. There are a lot of moving parts here in these.
Why don't you explain the two that are, why don't you explain the two that are substantive but not controversial briefly, in layperson's language?
Sure. So the, the prevailing wage item in the fee deferral agreement, we believe the better place for that language is, is in the agreement itself and not in the ordinance.
And we've talked to the local building trades about this, they have no issue with it.
They have no issue.
Good. Okay, so that, that's, that passes the, the test? Go ahead.
And which, which other would you consider to be, not the map, right, but the?
Yeah, it would be the third item that we're talking about, where you have language that would basically specify the application of the T-DIF to the Delta Shores project.
So, yeah, I'll explain that. So we've come to realize that that is the only situation where this would occur. We had, we had some more specific language included, that, or some more general language included that would have covered any potential situations, but we've recognized that this is the only circumstance where the exemption would apply. So we felt it appropriate to call that out, so there was no confusion in tracking this down.
That, that's clarifying, really. The policy was already stated in the ordinance, you're just being more specific as to where it applies. I don't consider that to be a substantive change. So I, I would entertain a motion then to, quote, suspend the rules, so we can take them under. Okay, good. Moved in second. I just want to make sure what we're doing here. All in favor of suspending the rules so that this item can be heard tonight, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Two-thirds required? Nine to nothing vote? The measure passes, let's take up the item.
Thank you very much. So, as I said, this effort has been a long time in the making and has involved many staff and many stakeholders over the last several years, so I'm thankful to be here in, in front of you tonight, and I appreciate your patience with a few last-minute items. We're here because the 2035 general plan had directed us to provide citywide infrastructure that supports the 2035 population growth projections, and also directed us to develop a fee structure that will support development and fund necessary infrastructure. We had four goals associated with this initiative. The first one was to provide for streamlined fee administration and incentives. Secondly, to promote infill development and support priority neighborhoods. Third, develop the structure for localized financing districts. And finally, fund infrastructure in a competitive and strategic way. This slide is rather busy, but what it represents is the significant level of outreach that was conducted, associated with this activity. This is not inclusive of everyone, but we certainly spoke with many, many, many stakeholders and took their opinions into consideration as we developed the framework. This graph here represents the total fee burden in each area of the region. The far-third-left area is the, several different places within Sacramento, and the right two-thirds is other competing jurisdictions such as Folsom, Elk Grove, West Sacramento, the county, et cetera. The black line represents the median fee. And you'll see that all of the Sacramento fees are currently beneath the median from a competitiveness standpoint. And this is associated with the costs to develop a 2,000-square-foot, single-family home. And what we're here presenting to you in a strategic way, as I mentioned previously, is represented by that small red hatched area on the top of the yellow bar. So it's a, it's a very small ask, but we've shuffled some things around to get a lot out of what we're asking for. The first piece of the program is the citywide development impact fee program, which is a new citywide fee to fund infrastructure for citywide transportation facilities. As you know, it's been very well publicized, the transportation revenue is declining. This provides an additional source of revenue to, to fund citywide infrastructure. It's focused on infill and reinvestment. It represents a balanced approach, in that it funds multimodal transportation systems. It's used to leverage state and federal dollars at up to five to 10 to one. It provides reduced fees in incentive zones, including the central city, priority neighborhoods, and proximity light rail stations, which is represented as the orangish color here on the map on your screen. And finally, credit is provided in areas where future development contributes to major transportation infrastructure.
Mr. Warth, Councilmember Ashby has a clarifying question. Please.
Ryan, I'm sorry, and I will save my comments towards the end, but I do have a question about this map.
Sure.
There's one problem with it in District 1, and I know it's a little bit harder in that area than some of the others, because it is, it's operating off of a proposed light rail line, but this does not have the newly adjusted route across the arena site, which would shift that orange section west, and would probably butt it up against the freeway on that left-hand side, and take it more from, I don't think there's any need to have it as far east as it is, and it doesn't hit some of the areas where I think we are going to have, or we're anticipating, light rail. And I just want to know if there's an opportunity tonight for me to give direction for you in this, if we approve this package, to be able to still shift that line over.
Sure. I mean, we could make those adjustments as the line adjusts. The intent is to provide for the incentive in areas that are adjacent to.
Light rail lines.
Yeah.
But I know it's hard to see, but as the line goes up there, it's still circling the regional park. And, and light rail, RT has already abandoned that route to come across the arena site as part of the arena reuse and go up East Commerce. So you're operating off of not the same map that RT is using for that future use.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, Mayor.
Thanks.
Continue.
Okay, the park development impact fee proposes, as Greg mentioned, some changes to the level of service that align with the current service levels we're providing right now, which are 1.75 acres of parkland per thousand residents in the central city, and 3.5 acres per thousand residents in the remainder of the city. We also added a fee to fund citywide park facilities, as I mentioned previously. This is a, this is a new fee that's worked in as we reduced the level of service, we're able to provide a new fee and a new funding stream for citywide facilities. We've also, we also have a reduced rate in incentive zones, which is a similar area to that provided for with the transportation development impact fee, and improved equity with, with fees based on unit square footage. So in other words, a 750-square-foot apartment building would not pay the same rate as a 4,000-square-foot, five-bedroom home. It would be adjusted based on square footage. And includes a provision for existing maps already approved at 5 acres per thousand. We have some cases in the city where a tentative map has been approved, the park has been planned, and they, it's been planned out at the 5 acres per thousand. So we've got provisions to accommodate that, to provide the funding for those parks. The incentives as part of this program include the inclusion of fee deferral, which allows development team to defer fees from a permit issuance to the final inspection, which could defer fees four months up to a year or more, and save, save substantial money. Incentive zones for both the transportation development impact fee and park development impact fee, as represented by the map I shared with you. A change to the Quimby level of service, the, the acres per thousand, which equals savings for those conducting or requesting subdivision maps. We updated land values used for calculating the Quimby fees, which were based on 2004 land values, and we updated those to today, which reduced, which resulted in some much lower land values. And then we've tied that to inflation, so it will automatically adjust yearly. We won't have this problem going forward. We have broader categories for what receives private recreation facility credits, before it was more limited, now we've opened that up. And credits for other types of parkland. And finally, provides a reimbursement mechanism for developers that build more than their fair share, which is the purpose of the finance districts. So in summary, this program supports the direction of the general plan. It was constructed collaboratively with several different city departments, the development community, and our neighborhoods. Provides funding for citywide transportation infrastructure and park facilities that currently have no funding mechanism. It establishes a framework for financing districts, and the overall program remains competitive regionally and results in little to no increased costs to development. In fact, smaller, affordable-by-design units will see a decrease in overall costs. And that concludes my presentation.
Let's, let's, we do have public testimony.
We have one person, that's Louis Morante.
Hello, my name is Louis Morante, I'm with the Midtown Neighborhood Association, coming here to thank the city for its hard work on the transportation development impact fees, particularly. I know that this has been a sort of year-long process for many of you, and I just appreciate the thoughtfulness that especially, Steve, your office has brought to this, and, and the level of inclusion that the city, Mr. Sandlin, thank you for speaking at our organization, has sort of brought us in with. I am here tonight to reiterate some of my organization's hopes for the transportation component of it. We had written a letter with Oak Park Neighborhood Association requesting that the city move from the 20, then 20% of funding going towards bikes, transit, and pedestrian infrastructure to a full 100% of the transportation development impact fee. We appreciate the, the commitments that were newly made in the long ledge. Again, thank you, Mr. Hanson, Councilmember Hanson, for those changes. Those improve the document, I think, in our mind. Mayor Steinberg, I wanted to say that your proposal on new transportation funding that you enunciated at the PPIC lunch, a 50-50 split between cars and non-car infrastructure, I think would be a good model for the city to adopt moving forward on specifically this proposal. The low amounts of money that transit, pedestrian, and bicycle infrastructure projects require mean that you can have a really high value for your project with the small amount of money that would be raised by the new fee. So, again, just want to reiterate our support, our appreciation for the city in, in taking this measure on. I know it has been a difficult and long process for many of you, and, and just encouraging you one last time to see if there's a little bit more that can be done on the transit, biking, and pedestrian infrastructure. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for your participation and comments. Let's hear from council members. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. So since I'm first, I get to do a lot of thank yous here. Staff has worked very hard on this for a couple of years, and it is really a mouthful. The staff report is 655 pages. They took on a lot of very complex, interconnecting pieces to make this fly. And so, Ryan, Raymond, Jim, Greg, I think, you know, you really deserve to be commended, because this, this was a really big charge. The amount of community outreach you've done is truly exemplary. You've gotten very disparate groups to agree on this, and that's not easy to do. You listened to a lot of people, and I know that you massaged and tweaked this thing until you got it to a pretty good condition, and frankly, almost everybody that I've talked to, certainly in building and trades, developers, everybody really, has reached a comfort level. Even, even the parks piece, which was very hard for me to get to, and lowering, lowering our service level goals from five per thousand to lower levels, but then offering the carrot of the citywide park fee is, is really, I think, forward-thinking. The fee deferral piece is really big, and I think that that's going to stimulate a lot of building, which is exactly what we need. We need a lot of housing units, and we need them as soon as we can get. So, again, I think that that's a really good piece. Also, the unit square footage idea is, is also a really good thought. Angelique, I'd like to thank you for a good catch, because RT is actually probably going to adjust the route, should we ever get there, and this, of course, could be many years in the future, depending upon how things go, but it is something that we're gonna have to look at in terms of rebuilding that map. So what I'd like to do is move the staff recommendation, so all 16 resolutions and ordinance. I think that, at this point, you know, you've, you've really looked at this hard, I don't think that you're gonna make it better at this point. I think you've done a really good job. Thank you.
If I could clarify, Mr. Mayor, the questions that were raised? Yeah, so the, the map is just an illustration, the language actually includes a distance from light rail station. So as that alignment is approved and moved by RT, it would, the ordinance would allow for an automatic adjustment.
Councilmember Getta, then Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you very much, Ryan, and all the staff on this issue. Appreciate you keeping me engaged as far as making sure that the housing incentive zone appropriately, appropriately included all of the communities that are having difficult times with those vacant lots. And, you know, as, as we see more activity in housing, and our goal to get 10,000 units in the downtown area, until we also figure out all those vacant lots in the other parts of the city, such in the south area of Glendale or Fruit Ridge Manor, even those at Colonial, and some in, in Tahoe Park, that, that are, that are difficult for the developer, developer to come in and actually build and, and, and sell the, the property, you know, I think this leads us in that right direction, making sure that we have a, a housing incentive zone that encourages that growth in those areas. I also want to thank you for making sure that we put in there the Sacramento Center for Innovation. I know in our city plans, we have suggested that another light rail stop, stop at that area. It makes perfect sense. It's near the campus, you know, it, it, once the Ramona pathway gets through and built, we'll be able to have another clean path there. And not only that, but it'll, it'll actually, I think this will help us for that, that property to, to get moving. I also want to support Councilmember Ashby's clarification, if it needs to be moved over more, or if it's, or at least identified on the map. The last piece I'll say is, you know, some of the communities, and, and Ryan, I appreciate you putting together a, a working group to look at some of the most challenging neighborhoods where we haven't seen development. I think we, I'd like to, you know, get a, a report back to see how this incentive zone is going. Do we see, you know, developers wanting to go into some of these communities in the south area as well, to, to fill up those vacant lots? And if not, I know this is, there's a trade-off between not charging fees and not having resources for parks, but if no one's constructing, then still, you know, the sum, you know, zero, zero, still zero. So I want to make sure that we start, we start looking at what we can do in those areas where they're very difficult to construct. So if we can get a report back on, has there been any, any interest, and if not, then what's that difference? And with that, I'll second the motion. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Ashby.
So this item has been, is really important for Natomas, and I, I can't, this is one of those times where the Brown Act has been a little bit hard for me. So I'm, I'm anxious today to tell my colleagues why this issue is a little bit different for Natomas, besides the fact that I have difficult constituents like Howard Chan. But in all seriousness, Natomas, North Natomas was built out with a finance plan in place, and with a master plan, which is the only thing even close to it in the city, is now Delta Shores. And so what that means is, when you shift this, when you want to do the T-DIF, you want to do the transportation shift in fee infrastructure, or you want to do the parks infrastructure, you are in some ways double-committing developers who already you are in some ways double committing developers who already have a development agreement. So we started two years ago with how do we unwind that? We can't bill them twice. And the finance plan in Natomas, which is incredibly complicated and difficult, and Laney and her staff have done an amazing job of trying to work their way through it, it is coming to the end of its shelf life. It needs to be done. There are a few pieces left, and there are also some pieces in there, like $11 million pieces, that don't need to be in there anymore. Everyone in Natomas that has built anything has paid towards those fees to the tunes of millions and millions of dollars. And now what's happening is we're saying we want the whole city to contribute to that same type of infrastructure, which is a tough pill to swallow when you have told one part of the community, pay your own way. So they paid their own fire stations, they paid for road widenings and on-ramps and off-ramps and east com, all of the roads around the old arena that are nice and wide and easy to traverse were not paid for by the city. They were paid for by development in North Natomas. And so what we've had to do over the last year and a half, and these guys have worked really hard to try to narrowly get us there, is to give credit for those amounts that were paid. And then we're trying to smoothly shift so the people who have development agreements in Natomas where they're already committed to these millions of dollars worth of projects won't shift to the new TDF. But new projects that come into Natomas and don't already have that type of agreement or obligation will shift to the more citywide agreement. That's true for parks, too. So there are a lot of large pieces of property already purchased that are already committed to and mapped out for our five acre park strategy. You can't switch them now, and you can't change the funding mechanism because then you would only be giving them funds to develop three acres of park when they are on the hook with their development agreement to do five acres of park. So we've tried to make a modification in here for that as well. And at the still time, and at, at the same time, still give credit to those developers who have contributed tens of millions of dollars to the purchase of the regional park and the development that's happened there now. So the reason I take the time to explain all of that nuanced information is because my vote tonight is conditioned upon work that actually takes longer than the work that is happening here. We have been working during, parallel, at the same time, on parallel tracks concurrently, we've been working on redoing the finance plan. But Hector, I need you to come up for just a second, if you would. The only way I can vote yes on this tonight is to have the assurance from Hector and Ryan that the concurrent efforts that are happening for Natomas simultaneously that are going to take longer than tonight, because tonight we vote and everything else is taken care of in the rest of the city. But in order for this to work in District One, there has to be a revision to the North Natomas finance plan, which includes quite a bit of work in transportation to figure out the nexus of certain road projects that are currently funded in the finance plan that either need to live somewhere else or be reevaluated as to what the true impacts are. And that, and that includes several, which I won't burden us, I know you know what they are, but I need to hear from you today on the record that that effort will continue on once this vote is made.
Yeah, Councilmember Ashby. First of all, my name is Hector Barone, interim Public Works Director. We have already assembled a team to start working on that. We have a consultant that we've engaged. We should be complete with the technical work within two months. The actual adoption of a new fee and an amendment to the community plan will happen late summer or early fall. There still needs to be the environmental process and getting to that in order to get those approvals. So, you know, we have that team together, and we are working on it.
Okay. Thanks, Hector. And Ryan, on the second half of that is parks. So we've made this exception to allow people to have a development agreement where they have to do five acre parks to basically have a preemptive use of their own dollars to do that, and then money would go to regional parks. And Councilmember Hanson and I have talked ad nauseam up here about the need to create a funding source for regional parks. There's literally nothing worse than being handed a hundred-plus acres and having an expectation in your community of a regional park with zero funding source, which is...
There is something worse.
I'm not sure. It's pretty difficult. And so we all have these regional park challenges, particularly District Six, District Four, District Three and District One, and we have no ability to meet that need at all. So this is really an important component, and I would argue it's almost too little. I wish that regional parks were going to get more out of this because it's going to be hard. We'll have to find a way to bond against that money to really make it significant, to be able to do the type of infrastructure improvements that we need. But what I need from you tonight is a commitment that in an ongoing manner, you will help me with this finance plan in the fee structure, in, in making sure that we don't build a fee structure that precludes development from being able to proceed in North Natomas. As you know, we've lost at least four projects in the last year based to the, based on the fee structure not appropriately really reflecting the nature of these projects. So can you just talk for a second about that?
Sure, yeah. I'll, I'll absolutely support Hector in his effort to analyze that finance plan and look to eliminate those improvements that are no longer necessary.
Okay. Great. And then one question for you on this, on the light rail path. I understand what you're saying about this being sort of a sample and built off of the stations. Here's the problem with that, though. There's an assumption in your statement that the stations will be built before the development that would benefit from these TDF incentive zones. And I don't believe that's true in District One. I think you will see projects that will come forward that would benefit from being identified as a TDF incentive zone because of their proximity to a future light rail line long before that line is in there and long before there is a station. So your comments work where the line is already in, but they don't work as this map is drawn right now for the future line because you're not operating off of the same line that RT is operating off of, which they're modifying now. So I just need some assurance that I'm not going to get an argument a year from now when a developer along the future light rail line, say an arena reuse project, comes to me and says, I should be in the TDF incentive zone, but I'm outside of your map. And you say to me, well, they will be once the light rail station's built, because it's not going to happen beforehand. And in fact, the same fee base that you're using is the same fee base that is used for those stations to come in. So the funding comes after, right? As the developer comes in, the funding comes in for some of those stations. So it's not going to happen that the station's going to be in first. Very unlikely.
So if they are adopted as future light rail stations, then they're included in the, the area that we're discussing?
Okay. Still like a little bit vague, right? So what I'm saying to you is whether or not these stations are in or identified specifically, because light rail has not specifically pinned down where they want the stations to be along that line. They have a preferred route. They're modifying the preferred route to go across the arena reuse site, but they have not identified where in that line their stations would be. So I want to make sure that the property like Allegheny or Innovations Center, which you actually called out in the beginning part, would benefit from being in the zone that they're in because part of what they're developing, or even the Schumacher line, is not in here along the I-5 corridor, which is intended entirely to be in close proximity to, to the future line. So I just want to make sure that we have this line more accurately stated in the District One area because you're not going to be able to use where a future light rail station is identified. It won't happen that that's identified prior to this incentive being invoked by the developer who's got the land.
Okay. I guess, so, so are you asking that we include any future? I'm not sure what...
No, I'm asking that...
How do we guarantee? I'm sorry.
I'm asking that this line really, that the orange component of this line go to I-5, because that would include the arena reuse site, which is where they're trying to put the secondary, where they're trying to move the route to.
I'll, I'll have Public Works weigh in on this because I'm not tracking the future light rail stations and what may or may not have been included, or what stage those, those stations you're mentioning are.
All right.
Well, if, Councilmember Ashby needs a guarantee here, and whether it's clarifying it formally tonight, or as I'm listening to her, is there another opportunity to come back? She's asking for good faith, as I hear it, to come back and ensure...
I mean, several of the, yes, he's, he's right. I mean, you both know, several of the items for which I'm voting yes on tonight, I'm doing so in good faith because your work extends beyond the period of time. I didn't want to hold this up any farther.
I appreciate it. So what is the guarantee that her, that her district is not going to be unintentionally disadvantaged by this change in fee policy to account for the fact that there are development agreements and a lot of the projects are already have paid their, have paid their particular fees, as I'm hearing it?
So the way the ordinance reads is that the incentive will be provided for development located within one-half mile of an existing or planned light rail station. So the map, we're not, we're not going to be using the map, we're going to be using the planned alignment. So I know there's a potential change with the light rail alignment, so I think what we can do is ask Regional Transit to provide us with their preferred alignment and use that as the planned facilities. So hopefully that works.
Right. So just, just to be clear, and, and I'm good with that, but part of what you've included here, they've actually already abandoned and has already been developed by your department through Nick Thee-Creedy. So if we can get that piece, some assurance that that's changed, because it does make a difference for the transit incentive piece.
Yeah. We, we can definitely update the map with the RT's preferred alignment, and we'll show it.
And then the last question for me, Hector, is on the roads that are in the TDF, Meister Way is included, but it is included as being paid for by the developer, which I think is fine. But generally, when there are cost overruns, then there are credits to the difference between what the city has determined the project price to be. I'm not asking that we make any changes, but I do think as we look at the TDF, Meister won't be the only one. Delta Shores will have similar projects where we're counting on the developer to pay, we're counting on the developer to pay the full fee, and if the developer doesn't pay the full fee, that there would be a cost overrun. And I think if there is additional funding that we get, whether that's state funding or participatory funding, that we need to look at a crediting system that allows for those projects, because we've had this happen in the past, and we don't want the projects to not move forward because we've finited the amount of money, and then it turns out to be more. There are things like in Curtis Park that that would have never worked.
Right.
Right? Okay. Thank you.
You're clearly getting the intent there and guaranteeing that the, that the issue's going to be addressed.
Correct. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Good. I think.
You got it, Ryan?
Okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Hanson.
I don't remember what we're talking about anymore. No, I'm just kidding. I think Councilmember Ashby makes a good point. I, I just wanted to echo a couple of things. First, Louis's comments from the Midtown Neighborhood Association. I think we're trying to advance a biking/walking agenda, but, you know, we're still sometimes crawling towards our walking and biking. And I think that, you know, the mayor and the council have been very strong about trying to find money, like the Secog funds to do Broadway, or the cycle track that's on 12th Street, and trying to move those projects forward, including the Capitol Mall complete streets. So I, I think that the TDF is only one piece of the larger transportation and transit funding, but we know that we have needs everywhere. Because Measure B didn't pass, you know, I see so many more potholes. I mean, just because I'm looking now more closely to see what we're, what's going on, but it seems like the weather, particularly this season, has caused much more road damage than we had had during the years of the drought. And I think if the drought had ended just a year earlier, we might have passed Measure B and had money for biking and walking and transit and pothole work, but we didn't. So we're still trying to do our best with what we have. And, and I like, Mayor, the idea of a 50-50 split. We tried this at STA at one point, and...
Remember.
And we're sort of successful, but not quite. And I think we've got work to do. I would say, just to my colleague, Councilmember Ashby's points about regional parks, never having built out a park is one bad thing, but having a park that's built out and used constantly by the community, but you have no money to repair and replace and take care of, is, is almost worse because the community expects it to be there. And when it declines, and I know Del Paso Regional Park needs stuff, you've got the parks in Natomas, but, you know, Miller Park, Land Park, Granite, you know, we have all these, all these parks that don't have access to funds. And so while we're giving up some on the neighborhood-serving parks here, I think the little bit that we're getting for regional parks is a step in the right direction. The fee deferral ordinance, if we had had fee deferral in place two years ago, we would have probably seen the I-15 microunit project built, because that was one of the things they couldn't finance through that, that gap. And that project now is no longer in play. Even though the entitlements are good, the landowners decide to do something else there because of, because of the way it worked out. So I do think that on those harder infill projects, on those projects that are maybe not as commercially successful because of the challenges of them, like microunits, we can see a significant benefit by changing our ordinance to, to do what you're talking about. And then the final thing is just, I appreciate your help, Ryan, you and your staff, working with me through all the different issues I raised privately, because I think that this is a much better proposal, thanks to all the outreach and work that your staff have done. So Jim, thankfully, you're still alive to see it pass. I know that this was supposed to be done last year in probably August or September, and we kept noodling and noodling, but, you know, the sausage is better once it's been ground finely. So we learned that from the legislature, I think. Anyway, I support, support the motion and look forward to seeing its success and hopefully, you know, its evolution as we continue to make modifications.
So before we vote, I have two, I suppose, call them new mayor questions. One rhetorical and one actual question. The rhetorical question is this: During our campaign, I know I heard a lot about, about how unfriendly the business climate is at the city, how hard it is to do business at the city, how there was a need for permit streamlining and all that. And so tonight seems like we're, we're passing a major proposal to allow development impact fees to be paid at the end of the process as opposed to the beginning. Where is the business and development community here tonight? I know there's, the outreach has been had and, and all that, and is everybody here? I mean, maybe people, show of hands, who's here to support this? Because I, I just, and I'm just a little sensitive because when the city does good things, and big things like this, this is a major shift in terms of the deferral of fees. I think it ought to be known, and not that we need the pats on the back, but I think it ought to be acknowledged here a little bit by the folks who are always coming here telling us how hard it is to do business with the city. So I don't, I just don't understand it, why it's a quiet chamber here tonight on, on this particular issue. So that's rhetorical. The actual question is, as I, I understand in addition to the, the streamlining here, which I consider this to be streamlining, and the fee incentive zones to incentivize housing, as Councilmember Aguera spoke about, that this is also an effort to try to make up for the deficiencies in infrastructure funding at other levels of government. But I don't see anything in here that describes sort of the magnitude of it. What do we, I mean, because we're going back to Measure B, I think, in, or form of it, in 2018, so we're not making up for the loss of Measure B. What are we, what are we talking about here? How much infrastructure do we estimate we're going to be able to generate as a result of what we are doing here tonight and this revision of how we assess fees in the transportation area, for example?
I'll let Hector discuss that one with you, or Lucinda.
What? Well, it's, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. I'm Lucinda Wilcox with the Public Works Department. As we went through, if you just look at our general plan and our metropolitan transportation plan, it says we need about $1 billion of new transportation improvements, for new capital infrastructure. That doesn't account for all the maintenance and deferred maintenance that we have. In addition, so the, and the TDF itself, we expect will generate over 20 years, 40 or 50 million. So it's, it's only going to kind of help us have...
How much did you say? I'm sorry.
About $50 million.
50 million?
Yeah, so it will, over 20 years.
Over, over 20 years?
Yeah.
Not much?
No. So it helps offset some of the impacts of new development on our transportation infrastructure, but it is in no way the answer to our transportation funding.
Okay. I think that's important to know. So I mean, I, I would say if I'm summarizing this, minor impact, but some positive impact in terms of infrastructure resources, but huge impact in terms of incentivizing development given what we're doing on the fee deferral side. Is that a fair summary and characterization of what we're, what we're doing here?
That's correct, Mayor.
In fact, the, the streamlining provisions in the code, in the proposal, which allow us to consolidate the administrative provisions of our fees, are maybe even more significant than the fee deferral. And then the adjustments to the park development impact fee, which allow us to provide a new funding mechanism for regional parks, while at the same time, keeping fees about the same and the funding source about the same for others.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for sort of the big picture summary for the new mayor. Appreciate it. Moved and seconded? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Measure passes nine to nothing. Thank you very much. Excellent work. It's terrific. Okay, let's move on to file item 27.
This is discussion calendar now. This is fiscal year 1718 budget development policies and guidelines.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Lainey Milstein, your Finance Director. The item you have before you is our annual conversation about budget development policies and guidelines. And what we are recommending to you today is to pass a resolution adopting the fiscal year 1718 budget development policies and guidelines. Our budget development is here before you know it, and we are well on our way, and we're looking to council to give us sort of the direction we need to proceed with the development of the budget. Most of the items that are recommended today are the same as in prior years. The one change that we've made, and I'll just put this out here on page two. Really, can I do that up here? Sorry. We had had items one through four for our core budget policies, and what we've done, you can see that items two, three, and four actually refer to the economic uncertainty reserve, Measure U, and the Innovation and Growth Fund. And because we were pretty exhaustive in our efforts to actually adopt separate policies during the last budget cycle, we have adopted separate policies for each of those. So we're proposing actually to replace items two through four with item two at the bottom of the page, which reads that funding decisions should be consistent with council-adopted policies. So these budget policies and guidelines actually went to your Budget and Audit Committee last week. Well, they went two weeks prior. We did make one change last week, which was to add item three to clarify that the economic uncertainty reserve shall be maintained at a minimum of 10% of budgeted general fund revenues, and that resources shall be added to maintain this level through the budget and mid-year processes as necessary. And in fact, the economic uncertainty reserve policy already had that floor of 10% in it, so this particular budget development policy matches the policy that council has adopted. And then we have the remainder of the budget guidelines that were also included in last year's budget. And with that, I'd like to recommend moving the resolution.
Councilmember Chenier.
We got public comment on this one?
We do not.
No, we do not. Jay?
No, I think this is fine. A budget and audit is where we wanted to add the, the economic uncertainty language. I think that's just something we need to have in, in front of us at all times when we're doing the budgets, and with that, I'll move the item.
I'll second. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Lainey. I just wanted to reiterate, you know, I, I really adopt these values, you know? I look at them and I think about it whenever we get into budget time, and specifically, you know, looking at ways to grow the reserve bond, its current, current goal, actually our goal is more like 17%, and I appreciate not wanting to drop below 10%, but to make it real, to make it very substantial, 17% is a goal that I think we should reach for. But a very important sentence is here, is that one-time resources should be used for one-time needs and not ongoing expenses. I think that's very important for us to keep in mind when we make decisions about what could be termed a surplus as we move forward, especially looking at outlying years where we see red ink whether or not Measure U passes. So I appreciate all the work you do, and I'm happy to support this as well.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded. I appreciate it. These are obviously very sound principles. I mean, you know, I'd summarize it by saying, "Don't spend money that you don't have." Right? Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah, very good. Okay.
Don't spend all the money that you think you have.
That's right. But invest wisely in things that matter to the, to the people and the neighborhoods. Okay. Top that one. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain. It passes nine to nothing. Mayor got the last word. There we go. Item 28.
Okay, this is a second discussion calendar item. It's a Housing Authority item, approval of agency loan and disposition of land for the Shasta Hotel.
Yeah, yes. Councilmember Jennings, of course.
Thank you very much. Before we start this item, my favorite Valentine is on the board for the Shasta Hotel, and therefore I'd like to recuse myself, and I will leave the room at this time.
Good. Good. Thank you very much, Rick. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers. My name is Taryn Wing, and I'm a Housing Finance Analyst with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. The report before you tonight requests approval of a $4.2 million loan commitment for the rehabilitation of the Shasta Hotel. This report also requests approval for the disposition of former redevelopment agency-owned land beneath the Shasta Hotel. The Shasta Hotel is an affordable, single-room occupancy development in downtown Sacramento. Due to the extremely low income affordability levels and shelter plus care units, the project houses many individuals exiting homelessness. The building is not, however, restricted to formerly homeless people. The shelter plus care contract is a rental subsidy that includes wraparound services. The Shasta Hotel was originally constructed in the early 1900s and was extensively rehabilitated in 1994. The project currently contains 80 SRO units, and following rehabilitation will contain 78 SRO units and a one-bedroom manager's unit. The loss of a unit is due to the addition of an accessible, community-serving kitchen, bathroom, and the larger one-bedroom manager's unit on the first floor. Staff supports this reduction because a live-in manager and additional community amenities will significantly benefit the residents. There are no in-unit bathroom or shower facilities at the Shasta. Adding them would result in a greater loss of units, and we are told that the upkeep can be challenging for residents. The proposed rehabilitation will be extensive, including new flooring, lighting, and common area mechanical equipment. Common baths and showers, laundry facilities, kitchens and lounges will all be upgraded. The unfinished basement will be converted into a 1,400-square-foot recreation room, including a resident lounge and bike storage room. In addition to the financing and rehabilitation of the Shasta, the Housing Authority is requesting approval to transfer the land under the project from the Housing Authority to the Shasta Hotel Corporation, the nonprofit general partner. This land was transferred from the Redevelopment Agency to the Housing Authority following the dissolution of redevelopment. SHRA is now mandated to dispose of all former redevelopment housing assets, which include this land. In 1994, the current owners of the building, Shasta Hotel Investors Partnership, entered into a ground lease with the Redevelopment Agency for the land beneath the building. Land lease payments were due annually based on the availability of cash flow, but review of audited annual financial statements revealed the project has never generated sufficient income to make payments on the ground lease. Staff is proposing the existing ground lease be released and all outstanding lease payments due be forgiven. Upon approval, the land beneath the project will be transferred at fair market value of $550,000 to the Shasta Hotel Corporation. The terms of the land transfer agreement will include seller carryback financing and deferred payments. The Shasta Hotel will be rehabilitated and owned by the John Stewart Company and the Shasta Hotel Corporation, which was formed in 1993 by SHRA to facilitate the initial acquisition and rehabilitation of the Shasta Hotel. John Stewart Company will serve as the property manager. Life Steps Incorporated will provide a minimum of 15 hours of resident services at the property. Agency staff has reviewed and approved the property management and residence services plans. Here with us tonight is Margaret Miller of the John Stewart Company, and staff is available to address any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. I have one question. As I, again, stepping back, big picture, you're, this is a major rehabilitation which will make it a much more of a quality project, correct? And the cost, if you will, is we lose two units out of it. Is that sort of the, the sum of it? One unit? One or two?
It's net, net loss of one unit.
Okay. And then the, and then is there a guarantee of, what are we doing about potential displacement of existing tenants? Is that, are we going to guarantee that the people who are living there now are going to be able to continue to live there after it is rehabbed? What happens to them during the construction or the rehabilitation?
Right. During the construction, there is a relocation budget that has been approved, and the relocation consultant will work with each individual tenant during the time that they're displaced, so that they will have a place where they will live until they can return to their unit. And it's usually done on these particular projects, usually, you know, they'll do so many units at a time, move those residents out, rehab, bring them back, and then progressively work through the building. But we guarantee that no one is displaced as a result.
Good. Sounds like it's worth it to me. I mean, higher quality, sacrifice of one, and no tenants displaced. That's bottom line. Let's hear from the members. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Although I noticed you jumped the queue there.
What'd I do?
Just cute. I'm just kidding. You went first.
I did go first. Always the prerogative.
I, I think that trying to restore this particular property, which was renovated quite a while ago, making the units modern and trying to preserve them as permanent supportive housing, is a laudable goal. We have other projects that we've developed in the past, like Riverview Plaza, which we know also is in the queue later, as we try to create new units. A lot of people think it's the less sexy thing to do, but preserving the units we have and keeping them habitable is a huge priority, especially 20, 30 years out, when they really do need a renovation. So thank you for all the work that the agency's done on projects like this, and I'd like to move the item.
Second. Moved and seconded. Councilmember Ashby?
Yeah, great work, great project. Councilmember Hanson couldn't agree with you more. Thanks for keeping it on the radar. I think this is really important work and the right thing to do, and helps us a lot with the mayor's housing goals, so good, good work all the way around.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Chenier.
Thanks. I just want to understand the ownership piece. If you could kind of rewind a little bit, so, could you actually state that piece again where you talked about?
Sure. So there's, there will be a new partnership formed, which is composed of the John Stewart Company-
Right.
-and the Shasta Hotel Corporation, which is the nonprofit.
And the Shasta Hotel Corporation is a nonprofit?
Correct.
Of whom? Who makes up that nonprofit?
It was, it was formed in 1993 by SHRA as part of the original acquisition and financing of the project.
Okay, so, so the SHRA is the nonprofit? Or is, I'm just trying to understand, because I know we've gone through this before.
Yes, it's, it's affiliated with SHRA, and SHRA still has the controlling interest. In other words, the executive director, which is myself, appoints the members to the board, but it's a combination of executive staff from SHRA as well as outside technical experts, who have expertise in various areas of affordable housing and property management, who sit on the board.
And, and so Shasta Partners, which is controlled by SHRA, and they own the land under the building?
The land will be transferred.
And the building?
The actual Housing Authority owns the land currently.
The Shasta Partners, I apologize. I'm dense on this.
The Housing Authority currently owns the land, and this particular action would transfer that from the Housing Authority to Shasta.
To Shasta, to, to a nonprofit run by the Housing Authority?
Yes.
Why are we doing that?
Well-
Why make that transfer?
We're, SHRA is mandated to dispose of-
You need to speak up just a little.
Oh, sure. We're mandated to dispose of all former redevelopment assets following the dissolution of redevelopment, and this land is considered one of those assets.
Redevelopment went away?
It's, it's like, you know, Rasa.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Obviously, because you said on the floor.
Very well.
And so the land went-
Land was Rasa land, so that has to go back to the-
It went to the Housing Authority as a housing asset.
Right.
And so that Housing Authority has to dispose, and so this is the manner in which the Housing Authority will dispose.
So the land is going back to Shasta Partners?
Correct.
And Shasta Partners already owns-
The building.
The building itself.
Correct.
So none of this will be owned by the Housing Authority, all of it will be owned by the nonprofit, and-
And John Stewart-
With a ground lease to the Stewart, to the-
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Comes from Gera.
Wait, so this is a, this is a Rasa property?
No. The land was.
The land was Rasa property?
The land was. The Housing Authority.
Okay, that's, okay, that's.
You have to dispose it, but they can still confirm. Okay. Thank you. Complicated, but, you know, the end result, I think, is a very good one. Right? You're preserving a very important housing stock for low and very low-income people and, and enhancing the, the quality of the project, so with no displacement. I'm in favor. Moved and seconded? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Nine to nothing. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say too, the agency staff, for some reason, their items are always last on the agenda, and they sit through the meetings when they're here, sometimes into like 11 or 12, and then they present. So I just want to say, Happy Valentine's Day, we got you out before, before eight.
Excuse me. Let me restate that, for the record, it's eight to nothing. Appreciate that. And, and we'll try to get you guys earlier on future agendas, to make it fair. Okay. Thank you very much. Good job. That is the end of the formal agenda. We now have public testimony, and then we'll take council ideas and- Up to you.
Well, you know, we have staff here waiting-
Okay.
For this particular-
And if you wouldn't mind going out of order.
Go right ahead.
So, you know, in the past, we've had public testimony about the treatment of homeless individuals, and some accusations were leveled about the police department and their treatment of homeless, specifically regarding confiscation of personal items. You know, regretfully, two people passed away here adjacent City Hall, Michael Nunez and David Collins, and some people intimated that that happened because the police had confiscated their personal position, possessions, and that may have been causative in, in their deaths. Chief Louis, could you come up and answer a few questions? So first-
No, no. Come on. Everyone will get their chance to speak, all right?
You know, the point of asking these questions is to get at the truth, so that there's not hyperbole in chambers, and that we all understand what we're responsible for, because that actually dictates the policies that this council will take to address any issues that we might be deficient in. So I wanted to ask Chief first, to the best of your knowledge, as regards Michael Nunez and David Collins, were either of them arrested under the camping ordinance, and were their possessions taken away from them for any reason by the police?
In both tragedies, no, they were not.
Well, that's an important point. So could you clarify, really, about the camping ordinance? We hear an awful lot about the camping ordinance. How do the police approach it? You know, my, I'll tell you, my personal experience, and it's mostly with the impact team, is that they work with a very gentle hand and generally try to get people to services. And so I would like to get your take on what the police policies are as far as enforcing the camping ordinance.
Well, the involvement in the police can basically begin different ways, whether it's through the observations of a Sacramento police officer, or through a call from a citizen or a business complaint relative to individuals that may be out there in the city. So generally, that will have a police response in which we will make contact with an individual or individuals, and basically to check on their welfare, to see how they're doing, to see if they need any assistance. We will advise them of the, the laws pertaining to illegal camping, whether it's loitering or blocking of thoroughfares in terms of sidewalks, et cetera, and then try to get voluntary compliance if they are in fact violating a law. But oftentimes, it's just a matter of having a conversation to see if they're okay, if there's any assistance that we can offer, any services that we can refer them to, et cetera.
One thing I'd like to specifically clarify, do you ever confiscate possessions if there's no arrest made?
If there's no arrest made? If there's no arrest made?
Correct.
Yeah, if it's abandoned property.
Abandoned property.
Abandoned property. We'll go to a location, we'll find property there, and we just can't leave it there, or we'll have to put, basically confiscate it for safekeeping.
Go ahead. I was going to ask the same question, but I just wanted to...
So, I mean, how do you compare that to just picking up trash or detritus left by homeless?
You try to evaluate it to look if there's a value to it. You know, oftentimes, you can tell that it is garbage or trash that has been discarded versus it looks like it's somebody's property.
But how do you determine if it's abandoned?
Let's add, if there's nobody around, if there's nobody there present.
All right. So, if you do arrest somebody and they have possessions with them, what do you do with them?
Well, it depends on how much, how many items they have. If they're actually physically arrested, the jail will not allow us to bring large items if that person is processed at the jail. So, we'll have to either book it as evidence or as safekeeping for when the individual gets out.
And you have a storage area on Sequoia Pacific Avenue, is that right?
Yes, we do. I will like to say, though, is confiscation of personal property is a last resort for us because we just don't have the capacity for it.
Excuse me. Wonder, you'll get a choice, no, you can't disrupt the proceedings. You'll get a chance to speak in a couple minutes. That's all.
Okay, well, you know, we've been called murderers, we've been called all kinds of things here at the dais, specifically around these two cases of Michael Nunez and David Collins. I really wanted to clear the air about that because that's absolutely untruthful, and that is not the policy of this council or the police force. So, I wanted to set the record straight, and I appreciate that very much, Chief.
Let me, I want to just stay up here for a second, Chief.
Sure.
And I thank you for opening up the subject because I know I had the opportunity to meet with a number of the activists who come to City Hall every week, last Friday for a good hour, hour and a half, and I know that our deputy city manager, assistant city manager, Sanchez, produced a memo today, and I believe Chief Louis, but I want to read some of the facts from the memo here, and we're happy to share the memo with members of the public. In calendar year 2016, there were 743 citations issued for violation of the anti-camping ordinance, and in none of those circumstances, according to the documentation, was anybody's property confiscated. Well, let me finish. There were several incidents, and most of them in January and February during the so-called Occupy period, where there were arrests made for violation of the camping ordinance after, I suppose, repeated efforts to tell somebody that they had to move somewhere. In those instances, there were several times where items were kept for, quote, "safekeeping", but after February of 2016 through now, there have been about a half a dozen incidents, half a dozen, where property was taken after an actual arrest, but in no circumstance, when a citation was issued, and I understand the citation itself is, is controversial, has been a subject of discussion here, but in no instances where a citation, when the citation was issued, was property confiscated. And so, this allows me then to ask an even more important question, Jeff, about our policy going forward. And this is what I talked to the activists about on Friday, and I'd like to get it on the record here. I believe the policy of the city of Sacramento, I'm just speaking one, not for the entire council here, ought to be that if somebody, that nobody's property ought to be taken as a result of being homeless, and nobody's property ought to be taken because they're in technical violation of the anti-camping ordinance, that the only time where property could consider to be taken is if there has to be an arrest that is either about a charge in addition to drugs or something, a charge in addition to the violation of the camping ordinance, or an arrest because of misconduct or some sort of unlawful activity or confrontation with the police. Is it the policy of our city and our police department to not take property from people who are homeless, even if they're in technical violation of the anti-camping ordinance?
It's not the current policy, but it is the preferred course of action not to take and confiscate personal property.
Okay, well, I want to be clear then.
Sure.
It should, and I just told you guys this on Friday, it should be the policy of this city, plain and simple, we don't take people's property unless, excuse me, trying to state a policy moving forward here. I want it to be the policy of our city that we do not take people's property for being homeless, and I don't think that has been our policy. I want to be clear, and I think Jeff sort of brought that out. Not saying, but I want to clarify going forward, we don't do that. If there has to be an arrest for some reason, then you follow the normal arrest procedures and what goes with that. But other than that, it's not been our pattern to do it, and I want to be clear in our policy that we're not going to do it going forward. That's, excuse me, that's how I wanted to clear the air here tonight, and I think it's consistent with what you've done in the past, and I think it's consistent with where Councilmember Harris was going just a couple of minutes ago.
I appreciate that very much, Mayor, and I'd support it, so I think we should bring back as an agendized item so that we can take that up and create a policy.
Well, happy to do that. I think if that's, if that's what it takes to sort of, because we're going to disagree on the camp, we're going to disagree, some of us, on the camping ordinance itself, but I heard loud and clear this issue of confiscation and the concern about equipment and stuff. So, first, first task is to research the history, which we've done, and I think it's, it's clear that that hasn't been our policy, albeit with a half a dozen incidents between March and December, but regardless of what happened in those incidents, we want to make it clear going forward, that's not our policy. And if Councilmember Harris is requesting that it be brought back to state it by resolution, then let's do that, and we can at least put that issue to rest here, and then you can tell us from the community whether or not that policy going forward is actually being, being complied with and followed. Okay? Good. Thank you. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for taking that out of order. I do appreciate it.
Yeah, of course.
I will volunteer to work with staff to draft a policy because I think that policy is one piece of a bigger policy that says how we treat our constituents.
And we're trying to open more shelter, which is really the point, and get more housing. And this week, we're going to make some more announcements, and that's really where we want to go here, but let's clarify this particular point so that it's not a subject of controversy and it reassures, I hope, even if, you know, proof's in the pudding, but to reassure what the policy has been and what the policy will be going forward. And I appreciate your help, Councilmember Carr. Yes, please. Maybe Jeff, you can help too. Okay? Okay, good. Let's hear from the public. Go. I'm sorry, I keep, I opened up the, we opened up the proverbial Pinter's box here, but that's okay. Councilmember Gara.
Only to say that I want to make sure that we, in this conversation, we, when it comes back, that we consider the community caretaker doctrine.
Sorry?
That we consider the community caretaker doctrine when this comes back.
Okay. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a good idea to really have a really in-depth discussion and analyze how we do this because I think one of the things that's going to be missing is how we identify what is being, what is abandoned and what are belongings of people that are homeless and how and when those determinations are made, because it could lead to an unintended consequence of having stuff left and the police or others take it away, and that stuff belongs to other people. And so, along with that, I think we have to consider things like, I know I talked about temporary shelters, but we, you know, short of that, we still need to have storage places for people who have these things where they can leave them and not be afraid to have the police or others take them away from them so when they come back, it hasn't been confiscated. So, I think, I think, you know, Councilman Carr, I'm really happy that you've agreed to be on the committee and call on me if I can be of any service as well, but I think it really is a discussion that needs to be had because, I mean, these are life and death issues, and right now, I think particularly, we have to be very mindful and sensitive to, you know, to how we deal with this subject, and so, thank you, Chief Louis.
We'll have the council members work with the city manager's office, and again, the key to me, clarity. Clarity. Good. Let's go.
We have several that have signed up to speak for items that are not on the agenda. We'll start with Wanda. Following Wanda will be Fago, and then it looks like Braden Murphy.
This is really upsetting to me because on several occasions, for once, there was a gentleman that had his truck out here, and we were, we had camping equipment in there, and the officer, even Mark Mariner, came to say, release me the vehicle back to my, into my hands, and do you know, the officer said, I'm not handing it to nobody. They said the guy that owned it didn't have a legal license. But we all asked the officer, because this guy was a homeless gentleman living in his truck. I will never forget any of that, the things I seen them take from these people and didn't arrest them. I took them over to the place where they supposedly had all their stuff, couldn't find it. The stuff was moldy. So, I don't know where this officer is getting his information, that it's not, maybe it's not a policy, but it happens. It happens on a daily basis. There's nothing wrong with my eyes, and we've got it on film many, many, many times that these officers were very rude, very abusive. One guy was going to get five felonies when he didn't even commit those felonies because the officers lied. So, this makes me really angry.
I understand.
How are we going to be able to trust the police if we can't, when they're, they lie about it? We told you what we've said. It happens. It's not your policy, but it happens. This homeless person had a vehicle that he was living in, they took that vehicle, I took him all over town trying to get his vehicle back, and there was no help from any of these guys. So, yes, I'm upset right now. I'm very upset.
I understand.
Because I seen...
I appreciate it. We're trying to make it better, and we're trying to provide clarity, and I can't speak to a specific incident, right?
I have it all on tape. Send it my home.
Okay. Then get it to us, and we're happy to look at that, but we want to try to clarify the policy going forward, and then the practice will follow, okay? And if, and look at the...
Mr. Steinberg, let me tell you this.
Wanda?
I'm upset because...
I understand.
Many times, I sat out here with these guys. I am not an unhomed person, but I'm going to be very soon, and you know what? I see what these guys, they tried to be very respectable for these cops, and they were, they were totally jerks to them. My family has been a part of the police department, not here in Sacramento, and I have always believed in the police. I no longer because of what Sacramento's done.
Who's next?
Fago.
Okay.
Yes, can I help you?
Okay, just stay calm. We're all having a conversation. Come on.
So, I do actually approve of the idea of having a new policy that does not include the confiscation of people's property, as Wanda is very upset about. We have witnessed multiple occasions of our property being taken during the right-to-rest occupation, when our property was confiscated from us right out in front of City Hall while we were with it. It was confiscated as abandoned property or stored property while we were present with it. That did happen, thousands of dollars' worth of gear, and if we didn't have receipts, we weren't able to reacquire that property. So, that does happen. That would happen more than 12 times just at the right-to-rest occupation.
That was January, February of last year.
Yes.
That was a...
I also know several individuals, and this isn't to say what you're doing is wrong, but the testimony previous was inaccurate. I know several individuals who had their cars confiscated because they were sleeping in it and other situations. Whether or not that was a ticket or a citation might not be logged in, because sometimes they wake you up and they don't give you the ticket, but they still move you along. So, you can't use the citations as the true impact of how this ordinance affects people. Sometimes the officer doesn't want to spend hours writing the report, just wants to move you along and gives you the option to move or get the ticket, and then calls whoever to come clean it up, you know? So, it's not, it's not as simple as some of them like to make it seem, but I do appreciate the efforts to try to discontinue that kind of action to people. It can help save a lot of lives, and it can help ease a little bit of the discomfort. And I also want to continue to commend Alan Warren for his proposal to put a moratorium on the camping ordinance in his district. I wish the rest of the council would come to some form of an understanding that that is also a crucial portion of it, but for tonight, I'm just going to be thankful that you're at least trying to keep our gear from being stolen. Thank you.
Hey, Braden Murphy. Following Braden will be Gregory Glavinovich and Pastor Gainsborough.
Yeah, quickly, I think a lot of what Fago said is good. I really appreciate it being addressed. I find it disastrous that it's after three deaths that it is being addressed, though.
No, the deaths, no. In fairness, Jeff Harris said it very clearly here, that the deaths did not involve confiscation of property, so you can't conflate, no, you cannot conflate the issues and to make your point. Make your point on the merits, but don't conflate the issues in that way because that's not fair.
I believe that's unfair. I'm not trying, I'm not trying to conflate the issues. The deaths is what caused somebody to finally look into it. That's a reality. When people were dying, that's when he wanted to make sure that it wasn't because of the deaths. How's that conflating? That's what happened.
Okay.
Is that not fair? Do you concede that?
It's not unfair.
That's...
No, because we've been working on the shelter program and a lot of this for a long time, for at least several months, but I don't want to get in an argument. Fair enough. Continue.
Now, you're conflating the issues because emergency shelter and camping ordinance is separate from shelters. That's, that's a whole separate issue, and this is the thing, is like, to you guys, it seems that it's not real what's happening. A comment from Steve Hanson, when asked about the camping ordinance, he said, "We can't have people pitching tents or urinating on the streets or defecating wherever they like." That reminds me of when Donald Trump says, "We need a wall because of bad hombres. We need a Muslim ban because all Muslims are bad." That's a rude, disingenuous comment. Nobody here is supporting homeless people to be able to defecate wherever they want. We're here to support homeless people to survive. If I had a list of all the issues, I would suspect Mr. Warren and I would disagree more than we would agree, but obviously, we don't disagree on wanting to save lives, and Mr. Warren has stepped up, and he has used the term "save lives." He wants to put a pause, a memorandum on the camping ordinance, and use his own land to save lives. Mr. Harris responded to that by saying he doesn't think he's thought it through. I would argue that you guys are thinking about it too much, and I would like to remind Mr. Steinberg that he said to the media, if it was brought to a vote, he would vote to end the camping ordinance, and Mr. Warren wants your support, and we all support Mr. Warren. Thank you.
Thank you. And articulate testimony. I just want to say, just in defense of a colleague here, Steve Hanson is the one who helped lead the charge to open the 11th Street Shelter here that has provided now hundreds of bed nights over the last couple of weeks, and, you know, and gets a lot of pressure from other folks in the district, you know, to not necessarily do that stuff, and so, he's doing the right thing. I'm just telling you.
I don't get to respond to that?
You take the comment, I'm just saying, I'm just defending a colleague because it's the right thing.
Do I get to respond to that at all?
No. Next. Thank you.
He said that.
I'm sorry. You, I got it.
It doesn't take away the fact that he said that.
That's okay. Next.
You're convoluting again.
Gregory?
Okay, I'm convoluting, but...
Gregory Glavinovich.
Continue the conversation. Go ahead.
How to decrease irritating high-tech in Sacramento and put Sacramento on the map. These days, if you phone any company, you are likely to get five to 10 options that don't apply to you, and you function as their operator. If you select an option, sometimes you get more options. you get more options. A law should be passed, if you do business in Sacramento, a human being should answer the phone. And this would put Sacramento, this would make Sacramento unique, and it would put Sacramento on the map. You would hit the six o'clock news nationwide, and this would spread everywhere. Currently, high techs make businesses more efficient, and businesses make more money, and they don't care about us. They, and they waste our time. I do not like the Pope, but 1996, the Pope came out with a list of three new sins. And one of the new sins was, it's a waste, it's send away somebody else's time. And I got another minute. I've had some, I have three other topics. I could wait until next week.
Yeah, that's good.
How to invest in Sacramento. I have something about the John Wayne Tennis Club, something about Forest Hills, the Hamptons.
All right. That's it. Thank you, sir. Next.
Pastor Gainsborough.
No, no, come back next week, really, when you, you got the thoughts together. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Following Pastor Gainsborough will be Michael Vox and then Macworthy.
Mayor and Council, people are dying. You're trying to save lives. We commend that. All Sacramento is waiting to see you, the city leaders, solve our homeless crisis. God is waiting. It's your move. Who is going to take on Goliath of the city leaders? Face the problem and not look away. Sacramento women and children are out there tonight. They should never be without a shelter to be brought to, ever. Reason, logic, passion, pity, even two nighttime deaths on City Hall sidewalk does not move you to adequate, immediate action. Adequate, immediate action. What must God do to get your attention? Must I remind you of the Exodus and Pharaoh's hardening his proud heart? He would not let, he would not change his ordinance. What did it take to break Pharaoh? And what will it take for you? You have 11 closed schools to use. You have 245 unused railroad acres, rail yard acres. You have empty buildings all over town. Thousands of unsheltered tonight while sleep trains sits unused, sitting on $350 million of Sacramento underwriting. Its mid-year budget in Sacramento, there's $18 million surplus. It's obvious to all Sacramento, what you are doing is not working. You councilmen have said it. 13 and a half million dollars of city expenses on homelessness, half of that on SAC police and SAC fire, mitigating, not solving the problem. Take one or two million dollars. Say it with me. Take one or two million dollars. Lease, buy, or build a triage building. Create space for 500 beds or pads or mats. Get ahead of the problem if you really want to solve it. Only councilman Alan Warren had the guts, had the chutzpah to suggest a temporary moratorium on the non-productive anti-camping, subhuman ordinance, the anti-camping so-called ordinance. Proposing a temporary open space with temporary tents to shelter our dying homeless. I'm almost done. Don't be cowards. Don't be cowards. Step up to the plate with Alan Warren and be counted. You're going to vote him down seven to one. How dare you?
Oh, Pastor, come on. That's enough. Thank you.
What is your better plan?
Thank you.
Do the unsheltered have to die to get immediate shelter for all of Sacramento's homeless? Let's do it immediately. God bless.
Thank you. Thank you.
Fox? Michael? Michael not here? Okay, Michael's next.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm not here to talk about homelessness. I could make some comments, but I, I really wanted to talk about the marijuana issue. And I was reminded when I looked at the agenda today for today's meeting that we're advancing piecemeal, piece by piece, step by step. But, and I could be incorrect here, and somebody, but I just want to say that I think in going forward on that issue, it's very important that there be some mechanism in place to gather all the data that can be gathered going forward about the actual impact of marijuana on society, on domestic relations, crimes, jails, everything. Because this people could, it's not likely, but they could want to speak again, and they need the data. So, and I didn't see that anywhere in all of the things that I've seen back, going back to November. I haven't seen anything where there's going to be a requirement to collect all kinds of data. People that die, people supposedly with mental health problems, how were drugs, marijuana, and alcohol involved in these? I think that there should be some mechanism for all of that type of data to be collected by the city so that it can determine what the impacts are in the various districts associated with the problem, because I've heard the council express concern about the impact in their district. Can't do it without data. And I hadn't seen that. Thank you.
Macworthy?
Thank you. Good testimony. More on that subject to come in the weeks ahead.
Yeah, that's why I was commenting off the.
No, very good. Appreciate it.
Okay, Macworthy. Following Macworthy is Anna Maria, and then Jeffrey Nelson.
People, there's a due process to citation and arrests. There's some paperwork somewhere at officer's name. If you were due to due process, you would solve this, because all y'all doing is commentary. Tell the people how many million dollars that you have brought in by using the camping huts. Tell them the truth, homeless, how many million dollars this city have brought in by using that. Just tell them the truth. That's all you got to do. But anyway, this is Negro History Month, and we should be there. But technicality looking at something. Do you know we'd see not a one black man speak on a development issue? It's not the first time. Not one black city council tonight and no other night spoke on a development issue. This is wild that we are so far behind. But I tell you, we're Negroes, now is the time. Now is the time to make your move in America. Donald Trump blew the doors off the jailhouse, and the ceiling blew up, and you won't come out. Now is the time to make your move. Make your move while they're fighting each other. Economics, people, demonstrating ain't no move. Post-integration was to count you and divide you. That was a law in slavery, and it was no offense. This is what we should be talking about. Black people move. 1921 Oklahoma City, nobody said a word. But they always talk about the Holocaust, which we don't have no information of facts, really.
What?
1921 Oklahoma, they're burning down the black neighborhood. But nobody said a word, but they always talk about the Holocaust. Everywhere you look, it's the Holocaust. Why can't you tell us, tell our kids what went on? Now, when we look at the cities that are not acting, will not obey fellow law, you're going to have some things going on here. And I urge all the people, get out to them, because what we know, and the people that you appointed to run that, don't know nothing no more than what they read. Next.
Anna Maria?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I appreciate that you are saying that you won't take, confiscate homeless people's gear so they can survive. I appreciate that. What I don't appreciate is you having your, whatever his title is.
Police chief.
Police chief, and tell lies.
Well, that's not, no, no.
So I think that what we need, okay.
If you disagree with the facts, but let's not start throwing out.
What we're going to have to do, apparently, is send photos, video.
Is not a liar. The police chief is an honest public servant. If you disagree, okay.
I'm done.
That's fine.
Jeffrey Nelson?
Don't call people liars. Come on up and give your opinion about what you've experienced or what you see, but let's not throw names around. We're not going to do that here in the city council chambers. Go ahead.
First, I want to say, I want to thank you guys for, whoever was responsible for putting the, I guess, the warming centers up for the homeless. I'm currently in one of the programs that they have, and I've been in there for, I guess, it's getting to, close to the year. And so I'm going to end up having to leave out of there and go back into a shelter. Now, I've been from the US, what's it, US Mission to Loaves and Fish, not Loaves and Fish, the US Mission to Salvation Army, to the VOA, and now to the program, and then back to, I guess, Salvation Army. So it, does it benefit any of these programs to actually help people get into housing, these like Loaves and Fish, these different programs, US Mission, Salvation Army, and VOA? Does it actually benefit them to actually get us into housing permanently? I don't think so, because it's designed to just keep cycling me, you know? And I want to get housing where I can get permanent. I worked at Food Link, and I thank God I got that, because I wouldn't have anything. So I'm working there, and I've been working there for over three years. And I would like to get into a permanent housing. Where I'm at right now is Hidden Cove, and they have nine units. And out of the nine units, they only allow two for Step Forward. Now, I guess a Step Forward, I don't understand all these programs, because I told a friend of mine, I said, I think I can understand a Wall Street derivative better than I can these programs, because they're just, they're too complicated for me. But anyway, to, I want to know, who do I talk to to find out where I can get permanent housing?
We will, we will have you meet with Mr. Sanchez there, and we will set you up with our city homeless coordinator to try to help you directly. Because your story, and we talk a lot about the camping ordinance, I know it's a difficult and controversial issue, but your story is really what is missing in Sacramento. We don't have enough housing. We don't have enough permanent housing. The city council voted eight to nothing on the 31st of January to redirect 1,600 public housing units towards permanent housing for the homeless. We're working with the county, and next week, we're going to have a two-hour workshop, workshop among the city council to talk about how that housing approach, mixed with supportive services and low-barrier triage, could actually make the biggest difference possible on homelessness in Sacramento. That's what we're going to talk about next week. But the council is in the midst of a, call it a long negotiation with a lot of partners around how we get a larger inventory of permanent housing so that somebody like you, who's been through the programs and who is ready for permanent housing, who's working, obviously, is like a good guy, you're trying to get your, your life back, that you can get out of this cycle. But there's not enough housing. And we aim to find you housing, and housing for many others like you. Next week, six o'clock, workshop. Turo? Thank you, sir. One more, two more?
We have two more.
Three more, four more.
So Monica Vejar is next, and then Nikki Jones, and then there's one speaker with no name.
Thank you, Mayor, for introducing the last speaker to somebody at the city that could potentially help them.
Of course.
I wrote an email to you last week, and I haven't had a response from your staff yet. So I printed it out, and I also CC'd all the council members, and nobody responded up. And I didn't expect them to, but I did expect your office to. And so I printed, had it printed out, and you're getting that right now. I'm native of Sacramento. I don't like climbing over or passing by the homeless on my way to work. Just doesn't seem right. I know it's a national issue. They're cold, they're hungry. I was going to ask for the warming centers to stay, I did ask in the letter, for the warming centers to stay open later, so they don't have to get up at 4:35 in the morning and be out by 6:00. It just seems unjust to send them out in the cold or the rain when we are leaving our homes and going to a warm office. But now that I've been here tonight, I realize the centers need to be open 24 hours a day. The people then can take a walk, leave their things, so they're not scooting them all around town and making the town look even really like a mess. And then they don't have to worry about their items. They could go to the bathroom at the centers. They're open 24/7. Until we get long-term housing in place. That was the first issue I wanted to touch base on, on this letter. The second is, we know that the previous Attorney General, Kamala Harris, she started a lawsuit against the state of Nevada for busing their mental patients here. I would like you to follow up on that with the current Attorney General. It doesn't matter how many resources we get in place, people will continue to bus their mental.
Thank you for testifying. We got your letter six days ago, and my staff, by the way, as is the staff of all the members, is very responsive. I'm sorry, six days. We'll try to get your response as quickly as we can.
Great. And I'm not finished. However, I did want to say.
No, you are finished.
The police of Sacramento have done a good job, in my view. West Sacramento is not the place people want to be. And I will be here from week after week to follow up with the homeless crisis and the warming centers. And I hope that you can do something urgently about getting those open long-term and not spend $7 million on the renovating.
Your two minutes are up.
The convention center, when we really need to deal with the homeless issue.
Two minutes are up. Thank you so much.
And the last speaker after Nikki is Carly.
So just to address this idea about the confiscation of property, I am really glad we're trying to move forward on something. I missed the chief's comments. I'll go back and, and take a look. But I think the sentiment of people is that when they know it's happening to people that they love, it's not that they're just like calling you a liar. They just know on the ground the facts are different. That, the thing is, when the ordinance makes these items of survival gear, and this is all of what needs to be worked out, and I'm happy to talk with you, Larry, if you're going to be working on it. But when the ordinance itself makes these items, sleeping bags, tents, tarps, blankets, illegal, that's what allows for this confiscation. So if we want to move forward with ending confiscation, what we, what we really, the direction we need to take and what we need to look at is, how is this ordinance making it legal for police to do that? So whether or not it's their stated policy, and whether or not you make a resolution, as long as this ordinance allows it to be legal for them to take it because it exists, because it's unlawful items, that is going to be the underlying issue in moving forward. And you know, in the 90s, there was a police chief here in Sacramento, and he understood, and he issued a moratorium on the camping ordinance. And he said that officers weren't going to, he could understand that it was creating tension, unnecessary tension, between officers and people experiencing homelessness, and he didn't want that to be the case. And that it wasn't a solution, and it wasn't creating any type of solution. And so there was a moratorium at that time. You could choose to do that now. I invite you to be a partner with the people instead of any other, yeah, any other thing. But I did want to just kind of talk about, I don't really have time, because we addressed all these other issues. But with the warming centers, we really need the police to stop doing searches of people's property and bags. There's no reason why that needs to be happening at the warming centers. It's a waste of police time. And for our communities, it causes, it breeds more inflammatory relationships between the communities and the police. And really, it's an overreach and an undue, like, search. They're not necessarily on probation. There's no reason for these searches to be taking place, and they need to stop tonight. They could stop. You guys could just instruct the police to stop.
Thank you. Two minutes. Come on. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Carly?
Last, last testimony.
Forgive me, I should have stood closer. It was a long walk. I wanted to personally thank Councilmember Alan Warren, who's not here right now. But I wanted to thank him for his courage and his leadership in requesting a moratorium on the anti-camping ordinance. Mayor Steinberg, I also would like to thank you for meeting with that group of us last week. We are looking forward to hearing more information about the action item that you took. In the meantime, you know, the In the meantime, you know, the, the police chief did say some things that are untrue. Perhaps it is that he's misinformed rather than outright lying, but the fact of the matter is, we do have video evidence. We will get that evidence to you, Mayor Steinberg, because it is happening, and it needs to stop. They are confiscating people's stuff with them sitting there. They're confiscating people's stuff without arresting them. When they do arrest them, they brutalize them. It's all bad. It needs to end. We need to repeal the anti-camping ordinance.
Thank you. Okay, that ends the public testimony. We do have one appointment, or one set of appointments.
We do. We just have one. It's the Park and Recreation Commission. It's Joe Flores for District Five.
Is that, you don't have to vote? Okay. Nothing else to come before the city council tonight? Oh, we do have council comments. I apologize. That's right. Just, just close to a Kleenex at there. There we go. Councilmember Ashby?
I just wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Chan, because on the consent calendar on item 22 was the finalization of his contract, and I noticed that our clerk posted notes over the word interim on his name badge. And I'm just really excited that, that we get Howard Chan, and we locked him in for three years. And so, congratulations. And I know your beautiful Valentine was here in the front row to watch that vote happen. So, thanks.
Depending on how he does the next couple of weeks, we may actually give him a sign of his own.
It's ordered.
Without the post-it note. There we go. Thanks. Councilmember Hanson?
Hi. First thing, I have an AB 1234 report for the clerk. I attended a conference, the New Partners for Smart Growth Conference in St. Louis in February, and just wanted to tell the council that I learned a lot, Mr. Harris was there, about, you know, how we can better do transit, walking, biking, providing housing options for people that are in need, and got a lot of ideas. So you'll be seeing things like the ADU policy and other aspects of what we learned crop up in our work. I'd also encourage all of you, every month, most months, there is a dinner hosted by the local government commission, and as a board member, I should do a better job inviting you. But this month's dinner was last Thursday, and we had two housing experts in to talk about the missing middle and how to create housing. That's not just high density and low density, but that middle section. And then we had an economist from the Bay Area Council talk about some of the data behind California's housing crisis. So what I said earlier, about two and a half million units behind, what we would need to have built by now. Some of that data came out of that presentation. The last thing I'd say is, we will now, in District Four, as of this week, have three warming centers. And I think Councilmember Chenier has worked with Wind Youth to open something in Oak Park. But I encourage each of you to find a location that we can use in your districts, because every time this comes up, people say, we need to put it in the central city. And we have done, somebody said to me, one of you said to me, I can't be first. Well, District Four has been first, second, and third. District Five is now in, well, you're probably third, because you're already open. Benay Israel will be fourth. I need you guys to step up, too. And when I say you guys, I actually mean my female colleague as well, Ms. Ashby. Happy Valentine's Day. North Natomas is just as good a place to have a warming centers anywhere else. So hopefully, you join me in taking part of the burden off the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
So, yeah, I'd like to follow on. I have AB 1234 report as well. I went to St. Louis. Reiterate a little bit about what Steve said. So I was actually looking at a 200-acre infill site in St. Louis and gathered some ideas to compare against the rail yard project, so that was quite interesting to me. I do have a couple of announcements. One is that River Park Neighborhood Association will have a meeting this Thursday night from 7:30 till 9 o'clock in Room E210 at Fremont Presbyterian Church. And this Saturday, the 18th of February, I will be speaking to a group of neighbors in South Natomas. It's not an organized community, neighborhood community group, but just a group of concerned citizens who requested that I attend a meeting and address their local concerns. That'll be from 10 to 12 at the South Natomas Community Center on Truxell Road.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Bagueta?
Feliz San Valentín, and I hope everyone's enjoying their evening today at home, if they're watching. I wanted to make a couple of announcements here. Number one, the Fruit Ridge Manor Neighborhood Association is meeting tomorrow at 7:00 PM at the Stockton Boulevard Partnership. Hope you guys can make it. And also, if you could save the date for Monday, February 27, at the Coloma Community Center in Elmhurst, we're going to have a conversation on the water meter program. It'll be our town hall on the water meter program, metersmatter.com.org. We're gonna make sure that we do our best effort to educate everyone about the upcoming meter installation and answer any questions you may have. That's at 5:30 PM on Monday, February 27, at the Coloma Community Center.
Thank you. Council Vice Mayor Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to announce two events that are happening on the 16th of this month. One is the Japanese-American Internment Day of Remembrance Event. It's put on by the ACC Senior Services. It's gonna take place on Thursday, the 16th, from 3:00 to 4:30 PM. This is a day to honor, a day of remembrance. There'll be a short film followed by a group of panelists who will discuss the experiences of them and their families in the internment camps. Panelists will also talk about life after the internment camp and how they connect their experiences to their current affairs. There'll also be special performances by the ACC Showstoppers and photographs of the internment camps. They'll be on display as well. If you'd like more information, you can call 916-393-9026. Once again, that's 39, 916-393-9026. And then the second announcement also takes place on Thursday, the 16th. We're gonna take District Seven office hours. We're gonna bring it to your neighborhood. 6:00 PM, Robbie Waters, Pocket Green Haven Library, and at 7:00 PM at the Union House Elementary School in partnership with Deerfield Mesa Grande Neighborhood Association. We bring City Hall to your neighborhood, take all your questions, your comments, or just say hi. It's a perfect time to stop by and make sure that all the issues that you're dealing with in your community are addressed, and I'll be at both of those. So I look forward to seeing you. Office hours in District Seven.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Last but not least, Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. And then the third event on the 16th of February, the Oak Park Community Center in Sacramento Juneteenth Incorporated are putting on a Black History Month celebration. It starts at 5:30. Lots of dancers. I think the mayor will be there as well. That's what it says on their agenda. So we'll be doing a welcome, and I want to invite everybody to come to Oak Park Community Center, 5:30 to 8:00, for Black History Month Celebration this Thursday night.
Excellent. Thank you. Vice Mayor Jennings would like to adjourn the meeting in honor of someone.
Very much. So for 30 years, my neighbor Barbara Zamzow used to watch my kids come home from school and make sure they got into the house, and she was right across the street. She was 93 years old, and we had her services yesterday at St. Mary's Cemetery in District Six. And I just want to close the meeting out in her honor. She was not only a neighbor, she was a good friend, and she was my California mother. And so Barbara Zamzow is her name, and I want to close this meeting out in her honor and honor her family by closing up the meeting.
Your honor, thank you very much. Vice Mayor, we are adjourned.